All right, I'll call the meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order. It's nine o'clock. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Waterman, would you lead us? Thank you. So number two, call for public comment. The public comment may be submitted in person or by telephone at these two numbers, six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And there is a space of time at the end of the agenda. For public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And number three, are there any conflict of interest items for any commissioners?
No.
I have none. Number four, action to approve the February fourteenth twenty twenty-three agenda motion by Van Dusen.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer. Any, any comments on that? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will say no, that motion carries. Action to approve the February seventh twenty twenty-three minutes.
A move.
Second by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any comments or corrections, additions or corrections on the minutes? All in favor, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will say no, okay, that motion carries. Then we have monthly reports. Auditor.
Uh, we have just about finished up the twenty twenty-two annual report. Very little left to do on that, which is good timing. Uh, we've been working on tax abatements that have come through for. The majority of them are people who missed the deadline for applying for a tax program that would lower their property taxes. Uh, we've also been working on a large number of splits where a piece of property was sold off and the new owners have asked us to. Take the old bill and split it according to how the property now sits. It's very time consuming and. Very, you have to be very careful to make sure that your. New tax bills total up to what your original tax bill was, should not throw off your tax account record and then. Uh, before you know it, you will be working on preparing the twenty twenty-four budget, so.
That, so for the question for the splits, is that, is that when something's replanted or, or?
You know, I, I don't know for sure, probably when something, yeah, a piece of property is, um, something is replatted from it, it's sold to.
Right.
A new owner, the old owner usually retains part of it. So then we wipe out the original tax bill and create two new ones that total the original. So it is very important that we come up with the same number, as close to it. As we can due to rounding and stuff, we'll be off a few pennies, but we're never off more than a couple of pennies or else we'll do it over and look at it again, so.
Any other questions?
So next Tuesday, there will be a number of abatements that will be coming before you for your approval. They've been. Approved by the city, uh, tax splits do not require. Approval because we are not changing the tax dollar amount at all. We're gonna come out to the same dollars.
Any, any other questions? Maybe. Why don't you, you're, you're next, so why don't you come up? Yeah, why don't you come up and give your report?
The information for splitting the taxes comes to me, it's usually Carol that makes the request. Goes to the Director of Equalization Office who prepares the tax split and they detail everything out. We make sure the values. The original value is what it split amounts to, and then we proceed with applying levies, so.
Most of the tax splits come from duplexes or townhomes, the newer ones that are built, they start off on one piece and then get split and so then.
Okay, okay.
Then one, yeah, cause they're sold, so then the new tax bill will be split between the two new owners. That's what most of them are otherwise. It's when someone basically buys. A piece of property that is only a portion of what we currently have on that.
So what about the egg splits? What are those are resulted? Cause we do have a lot of egg. Properties.
Yep, that's the same thing. So anything like if we have a hundred and sixty acres on one record, somebody comes in and they buy half of that. Then that will result in a tax split, but they sometime, most of the time with the egg, it's. Family to family, we don't necessarily do that many tax splits on those, cause they figure it out amongst themselves. Um, but.
And that is an option is for the property owners to work it out themselves, figure out who owes what, that takes the pressure off of us.
Yep, definitely. Yep, so they have to approach. Um, the Treasurer's Office or our office asking for those tax bills to be split, so then. Um, we figure out who the original owner was on the tax bill and then send out to the new, but we do not pro rate, yep, we actually just do. Full value and let the title company pro rates when they do it, yeah.
What's your, your report?
Okay, so, um, I printed these out for you guys, it's just. Property in assessment information. Um, we will be this week starting to print out our assessment notices.
So they will be going out, um, at the end of the month. They're required to be out of the mail.
March first.
I print it, you want it, it's good, thank you.
Um, our adjustments are basically very similar to last year's adjustments, just about everything is going up. Egg land went up this year and that is determined by the Department of Revenue, um, for the seven-year Olympic average. Um, this first sheet, the property tax relief programs, that's actually sent out with the assessment notice to all of, um, property owners. That is required by state law now. To send those out each year. And then just a couple of the other things are just a few things that we have in our office that, um, we give out to people. That, you know, just kind of helps explain what's going on. And then the appeal process packets, those kind of have the dates and stuff of. When appeals are due for local boards, they're due by March sixteenth, county boards, they're due by April fourth. But we will hold, um, our county consolidated boards that you guys sit on April eleventh. And we'll get more into that. Probably next month as it comes up, county and consolidated, yep.
You say April eleven?
April eleven. So let me know if I can't come, but of course I'll remind you and email you. Um, I know you have sat on township, township board, you kind of know what's going on, but if you. Need a refresher or just. Have any questions or anything, go ahead and stop and see me anytime.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
So these are just to emphasize, these are appeals to valuations, not.
Appeals to assessments, yep. You cannot really appeal your tax bill, you have to appeal on the assessment side.
Okay.
That's how it gets you this year up that.
Yeah.
Something I. Land on any neighbors.
We, we have had after tax, but we didn't really have very much last year, which was surprising, but I think everybody kind of understood. What the market was doing and the market continued to do that all summer, um, but when they actually got the tax bills this year and saw what it did. We have gotten some pushback from that. However, you know, a lot of people have been coming in, but honestly, we tell them, you know. Yeah, it's, it's not any fun, but they're gonna go up more. So, you know, and we have the sales to back it up, it's just. It's a lot.
We did have one property tax owner call who, um. Lives in the city of Watertown, but owns a piece of ag land in a taxing district that has a school and a township opt-out. And his question was, who do I complain to this about? And I, we said, well, you need to go to the governing board of township or the school district. Well, isn't there anybody else I can complain to? I said, no. And I said, and I will tell you that that school district and that township. Followed every letter of the law to get their opt-outs approved, so. You may not like it, but, um, the, the code, the South Dakota applied laws were followed and they. Got their opt-outs in place according to how they had to, so.
Yeah.
But they have called us commissioners, just to make them feel good.
Yep.
They complained about.
Well, and that's, that's our job to hear those complaints, which is fine, and you do anticipate having those appeals, right?
Or township opt-out, because you are not their governing board, so.
And the school gets three fourths of the tax bills, but I do know a lot of the out of state or people that have come from out of state, they're surprised at their property tax bills. Because they're so much lower than the other states, which is nice, but, I mean, still seeing it go up every year. I just got my letter saying my house payment's going up, cause my taxes go up, but. I mean, it happens to everybody, it's just no fun.
Okay, any other questions for Director of Equalization? Thanks, Sean. April eleventh.
April eleventh. Don't worry, I'll remind you.
Yeah, sure. Did you send? All for directors next, uh, next monthly report, did you send that? The, your report?
Yes.
I remembered this morning to send it. Good morning.
Thank you.
Um, luckily or thankfully, January was a little bit of a quieter month than December, so we needed. Be able to catch our breath a little bit, so that was good. Um, so busy, still seeing, um. A fair number of people. Uh, our numbers. Twenty-three unique individuals and. Services, total client contacts, those are just some of the recording areas in our computer system. And you can see the costs at the bottom, those are as of January first. Um, so. We had a fair number of funerals in January, which I had mentioned last month, we had. Four and approved three.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you remember what we have budgeted in that line for funeral? Cause I don't remember what that was.
Twenty thousand.
While she, while she's doing that, so the total, I know, I think I asked about this before, so the total client contacts, maybe we need to work for a different way to word that.
Well, so it's, it's actually an office thing, because our service is recorded by month is. In, you'll have to come over and I can show you our software system, because it's, it's just where, where we're recording it, and so it's. It's a process issue in our office of how we're recording and what we're.
Four thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have spent thirty-five percent of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then on the back is just the different, um, types of services, the. That we're providing to different, to each of our clients and then the referrals where we're making referrals to as well. With that. If any of you have, I'm not gonna go through those line by line, but if there's any questions.
Uh, is care court just, you know, it looks like. The way it's sorted, so the. Case management, I understand what that is, is care coordination, how does that differ from?
It's a lower level, and so we've had discussions and defined that in office. Care coordination is kind of the person that comes in and they just need referrals to some different services.
That's not ongoing.
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's more of that we can get them connected quickly with the services that they need. Case management is the ongoing support that we provide, so. Um, so with cares, ERA, Carrie continues to administer that. January was pretty busy for her. She did three, three thousand five hundred dollars in administrative fees were reimbursed through the state. Um, I cap, she is averaging around ten hours per week and her hours now are Monday through Thursday, nine to four, and then she has Fridays off. Um, and then as far as our office itself, Paige was officially started as our new CHW on February first. Her hours are Monday, Wednesday and Friday from. Friday mornings until noon. And, um, she is starting to see some clients, so that's been good. It's kind of, it's still an internship. Starting her job and so it's taking, we're, she's getting a handle on all of the flow of things and ways to do it, so. Um, I, yeah, I think she'll be a good fit though. That's, she's doing a good job. Um, we are, tomorrow we're meeting with the state CHW consultants, the people that admin, one of the people that administer the grant to talk about how we can. Start the Medicaid reimbursement process, which I mentioned last time, and so we're moving forward with seeing if we can, um, get our funding through Medicaid. Um, more than the county with that. The Watertown Cares Board, um, which is the one that's gonna have the emergency housing. I am on that board now. We are hoping to start the interview process that within the week, we have some good candidates, and so we're hoping to be able to hire for that soon, which will be. Um, huge, it'll be a huge load lifted for me as well, so that's, hopefully that'll happen soon and we can. Get that program up and going and then the county can step out of the running of the emergency housing, um, with that. It'll fill a huge gap in our community. We're also working on our startup funding, uh, and so we're hoping to do a partnership from the Watertown Area Community Foundation, the city Prairie Lakes Hospital in the county. And so once we have more information and know more specifics, I'll be back to talk more about what we're, um, what we're needing for that, just until we can, um. Be a really operational organization with that. Um, we're planning to attend that my staff, myself, Carrie and Paige are planning to attend a training put on by CASA that focuses on helping our community and how we can work with people in our community. It's a national speaker, Jody Farr, and it should be a really great training. It's actually a full day training with Jody speaking in the morning and then the ACEs training in the afternoon. That is, um, February twenty, it's a Friday, twenty-fourth, it's. Twenty-sixth.
Lake Area Tech.
Yeah, it is at Lake Area Tech and I.
Twenty-fourth is Friday.
Yeah, February twenty-fourth, um, and I, yeah, I have a request if we can have our office closed during the Jody Farr speaker time. And then the ACEs training, only we won't all go to that, um, because I've already received that. Training. And then the South Dakota Association of County Welfare Officials, I am now the vice president, um, through this year, so we're planning our annual meeting, April thirteenth and fourteenth, and that'll be in here. With that. And then the systems appear in strategic planning pieces, um, our interagency meeting, we had a meeting this last Tuesday, it was a networking meeting, which was nice to just hear about what all of the other agencies are doing. We had twenty-two people attend and that was at Midwest Bible. And our strategic planning working groups, um, they continue to develop their action plans, they're continuing to meet. Our Advisory Council, which is the overseeing council, meets February twenty-seventh, and so I'm kind of challenging all of the working groups to have a good. Plan to present to the Advisory Council. Some of the highlights are that we will be selecting our group name and logo this month, and so that'll be really exciting to have an overall umbrella where we can refer people to, to get services. A website will be developed for the community resource and that will be ready by April. And then Watertown Cares will soon provide emergency housing, which was one of the major goals of that strategic planning. And then, um, this is also a big, um, exciting thing and more details to come, is that we're planning an awareness day for businesses in the community on April eighteenth. That will include a poverty simulation and announcements regarding resilient communities, and so, um, again, we're, we've been. Meeting weekly to plan for that one and that'll be an exciting event for our community.
Where, did you say where that was gonna be?
Um, that's gonna be at the event center.
At the event, yeah, we did a poverty simulation up here several STCCs ago, it was, it was interesting, very eye-opening.
Yeah, we're hoping that we can, um, challenge community members to come and attend that, so.
You gonna say something, Commissioner?
No, I was just gonna echo your thoughts there. I didn't wanna repeat what you just said, but those are very, uh. Eye-opening.
Yeah, it can be pretty powerful, so yeah, I will, all of you will be invited and we hope you can attend. And hope there'll be some other things involved with that day as well, so it'll be good. And then we're also having some conversation with others regarding the sustainability of the work that we're doing. What we know now is that it's really the collective impact model. And so we have to get the pieces in place that follow the collective impact model. One of those big pieces is having a backbone supporter, backbone agency, and so those are some of the conversations. Finding out Sioux Falls has some of these pieces in place, and so having conversations with some of them. And then local community members as well as, so we can look at what options we have. Zoom has been. Our friend, the, to have, be able to just jump on the computer and have conversations with people is helpful.
So when you say backbone, do you mean, you're talking about organization, you're talking about tech? Or?
Um, so really in the collective impact, the backbone organization is really the person that steers the ship. And keeps things going, kind of the guiding thing. I have been that. Um, in addition to all of the other pieces that of work that I'm doing, and so we just need to look at for sustainability purposes. How we can have that, so it's more of the person, it does include some of the technology, but it's more the person. Guiding the ship, so yeah. Yeah.
Sure, any questions on, right, on welfare's important, you, you, you have a couple.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Here, so, um, I can go and take those, so I guess number eight is yours and, uh, we'll come back to number seven in a minute. But number eight is, uh, action to approve a contract with Odney to develop a website for social services for the Social Services Advisory Council.
And.
Explain that one.
So that is, Adme has been providing, um, our marketing for, through the grant, it's the Health Improvement Innovation Grant, and this is. Already budgeted through that grant, this is just permission that we can. Funnel the money through from that grant, so, um, that won't come out of our county budget at all, it's all. One hundred percent out of the Health Improvement Innovation Grant, which we got from the Department of Health.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Motion by Commissioner Van Dusen, second by Waterman, um, any other discussion can, so this is just a. Uh. This is basically the, kind of for lack of a better term, a marketing, you know, public.
Yeah, so this website will be, um, I'm very excited because we've started having some of the conversations to get, um, this moving forward and it's gonna be a community website, kind of a one-stop shop. For people to go to and to be able to find all of the social services resources, um, and we're talking about linking to other pages as well, so it will really be that community page. To link to the services in our community.
Is it, and will there be a link to it from two-on-one and all?
Well, so we'll have a link to two-one-one on our page.
Okay.
Yeah, um. Yeah, and we're having, we're also having conversations with two-one-one, um, on their resources. What, what they had said is in order for us to. Specialize the two-on-one page, we would have to have a. Contract with them for some specialized services, and so that might be something we look at down the road, but right now we would probably just link to the basic two-on-one page.
All right. It's for chair.
Right, correct.
Chair, uh, do we have a, a contract with two-one-one, the county?
No, they, initially.
Services to them.
Initially, when it was first talked about, the county did help with that, but then the whole, they went statewide. And so the county no longer had that because it went statewide and so there's not, the county doesn't know.
So, so the, so.
As far as I'm aware.
So the role of say the county, say the welfare office and other services, say veteran services, things that people might be, just wanna know. Or, or other organizations in the, in the community is to inform two-on-one what they're basically, what their other, you know, contact information is, so.
Right.
So that, so.
That's our, our obligation basically, too.
Yeah, to take advantage of it, so.
Yeah, 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 and we will still continue to work.
How long has this, uh, ordinary been in business?
Um, a really long time, I have, there's, um, they're actually, so they're a company out of North Dakota, but Jen Bender is our consultant here in Mar, and she lives in Watertown. She was, uh, marketing at the hospital and then she went to work for Adme. And has moved back to Watertown, and so it's a Fargo company, but the, we're working with a local person.
Yeah, I see Bismarck in here someplace.
Yeah, they are.
On the, on the front page.
Yep, that is where their home base is, but Jen lives in Watertown.
It pretty well covered all the bases. And it's a hundred dollars a month. The initial five thousand and then a hundred dollars a month.
I'm going, and that will be. Um, you know, it, it benefits the county and so it may be something that we look at the county, it may be something that once we get our kind of. This whole systems of care up and going, that we incorporate that fund into that budget as well, but for right now, it would be a county fund for the hundred dollars a month. For that.
Yeah, so.
I'm going.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will say no. That motion carries, and then number nine, you wanna, that's, that's yours as well?
Yes.
So that's action to authorize closing of the welfare office for employee training.
So that's the Jody Farr training on February twenty-third, and I would just ask if we can close the office from about eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, so we can attend that training. She actually speaks from nine to noon.
So twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Okay, it's twenty-fourth, so.
You said sir.
I'm sorry, twenty-fourth, Friday, Friday, February twenty-fourth.
So motion by second by Schwer. Any other questions or discussion? Yeah, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. So it's, just put the notice on the door and.
Yeah, well, I don't know, all right.
Okay. Hey, we need to back up to. A, agenda item number seven, action to approve the auditor's account with treasurer and note monthly register of deeds fees.
So the monthly register deeds fees in January were twenty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then you have the report of the auditor's account with the treasurer for the cash and cash items on hand as of the last day. Of January, and the second page of this report shows you where the cash fund balances are also. For the general funds, special revenue fund and custodial funds.
Think a motion to approve, a motion by Van Dusen, sir second, second by Johnson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Here, that motion carries. Yeah, item number ten, opening of annual bids for highway supplies and weed chemicals and action to reward bits.
Good morning.
Thank you. Our, our viewership on YouTube probably goes up for this part. What was that?
I'm just kidding.
I talked to another superintendent in a different county and they opened theirs last week and, uh. Yeah, I'm. Kinda curious to see what ours are gonna be.
Yes, that's probably why our YouTube, YouTube viewership is going up, because.
I got.
Wanna make sure I don't give you any weed bits. You got one of those anyway?
Hey. The first one is from Chemcast. And we're on concrete pipe, concrete pipe, yes.
And Chemcast is from where? Location.
I think they're out of, uh, Hartford, if I remember correctly. Yes. All right, twenty-four inch pipe. The first one. Is forty-nine fifteen. Okay. Thirty-six inch. Is ninety-six fifteen. A sixty inch. Is two hundred and sixty-eight fifty. Okay, I. Don't think they have any bridge deck, but they do have box culverts. I get the right one. There's pages. Same little sound. All right. The eight by eight box culvert. Is nine forty-seven thirty-five.
Can you repeat that?
Nine forty-seven thirty-five. That's per linear foot is what we're talking about, right? Yes. And then the ten by ten. Is one thousand one hundred fifty-three fifty. Just making sure they don't have any. Restressed bit, bridge deck, I don't believe they do, but. Okay, the next one is from Rinker, they used to be, uh, Portera. They were bought out last year.
What did you say that?
Rinker.
Rinker, okay. Still out of Rapid City.
Yep. Yeah. The twenty four inch pipe is forty four seventy seven. Thirty six is eighty one ninety six. And the sixty is two twenty eight twenty.
Two twenty eight twenty?
Are these prices delivered to us, Rick? Or is that freight extra? I think most of the time it's delivered because I think we had delivered, uh, out by Pelican and that was included in it. So. That's something I could check out. Pages and pages and to find the. What we're looking for. Okay, we can go to the box culvert. Looks to me like it is. Eight ninety eight. For the eight by eight.
Eight ninety eight even?
Yes. And the ten by ten. Is nine seventy five even. Okay, the pre-stressed bridge deck. The forty foot, twenty three inch. Is six thousand, five hundred twenty three even. In the fifty foot. Is nine thousand, two hundred seven dollars even. Okay, the next. One would be. Liquid asphalt. And this is from Jebro. And they're out of Sioux City, Iowa. Okay, the first one is MC seventy. Is one thousand, two hundred sixty six dollars and thirty nine cents. Okay, the MC three thousand. Nine hundred forty one dollars and forty seven cents. And, uh. One fifty through two hundred. Is seven sixty four and one cent. Okay, and the next one is from Flint Hills. This is for, uh, liquid asphalt, like. Flint Hills, yes.
Where are they at?
Marshall. Okay, and their MC three thousand is eight. Eighty even. So MC, MC three thousand. And I don't think they have.
That's all they'd been on last year too. Was the, uh, three thousand.
Yep. Okay. Now we have, uh, our fuel bids. First one. Is from Coal Petroleum. I see Justin's in the back of the room. Okay.
It's for diesel or gas or?
For diesel. Number two diesel is three oh four.
Is that in Watertown or the outshops?
That would be in Watertown, the outshops. There's an eight, add eight cents to that.
Okay. So what did you say it was?
Three oh four.
Three twelve.
Yes, correct.
Edison, so Dakota, correct.
My mistake, it wasn't eight cents.
Looked better off, Justin.
That was for, uh, number one fuel.
It's, it's, it's more.
Eight cents more. Yep.
Number one Watertown?
Yes.
Okay. Just.
Right, the, uh, the number one. With the fluctuation in America, we've seen this last year. Whatever goes on the number one is using, uh, the state side that uses, uh, a big, big press that you saw was a perfect. You see one way and that with the price, uh, some balls from them all. And then, like, that, but there's that, these cents.
Yeah, that's really. Any other bids?
Um, yeah. Okay. Unleaded ten percent ethanol. Is two sixty three. And then there was no bid on twenty and thirty.
Then on the, on the outshops, there's no, nothing on the, back on diesel, there's something about outshops.
Fifteen cents more per gallon for small deliveries on outlying shops.
Okay.
For both?
We don't have gas outside.
Oh, I meant, sorry.
I was back in diesel.
Yeah, I'm talking diesel.
I was back on diesel, yeah.
To the outshops.
Yep, yep.
So how much more is it per gallon then?
Fifteen cents more per gallon to the small deliveries to outshops.
For the diesel also.
Yes.
Okay, fifteen, okay. And just the one for gas?
Yes.
E ten, okay.
Yes. The next one, Sioux Valley. Okay. For the premium field master diesel is three fifteen.
Is that number one or two in our understanding?
Or is it really, that would be number two, so three fifteen.
Yep.
Three fifteen.
Yep, and then he has, uh, Schaefer's dyed premium number two at three oh nine. And then. Schaefer's dyed number one is three sixty. Okay, E ten. Is three oh nine. E thirty is two eighty one. And E eighty five is two thirty. What about to the outshops for the one, diesel? To the outshops. Uh, the Field Master is three twenty one. Number two is three fifteen. And number one is three sixty six. Okay, the next one is E Rock. And this is from Northern Conning. And it looks like it is six fifty five per ton. We picked that up over there then? Yes.
Or be a smaller one inside that one.
I wouldn't surprise. So just, while he's doing that, so on the notice, it said all items to be delivered. With two locations within Cottin County as required by the county highway department, so.
But it does not indicate that there's a cost for that.
Yeah.
Maybe we should. Do that next time. Okay, we should specify that, so.
All right, this one is for P Rock also from Spencer Corey's. And they're out of Spencer, South Dakota. And there's our seven sixteenths chips. They are ten eighty five per ton.
Say that one more time, you said seven sixteen.
Yeah, they have seven sixteenths. Is the material and then, uh, ten eighty five per ton.
So did Conag indicate a size or was that not in the spec?
No, that wasn't in the spec, so.
Okay, all right.
So, the, the actual good ten eighty five.
Yeah, yes. Okay, gravel crushing. It looks like we have one. Okay, and it's Brownlee Construction. From right here in Watertown. And half inch is three twelve. Five eights is two seventy four. And three quarter is two thirty four.
So those prices remain the same as last year.
They did?
Yeah. The only ones.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
It's interesting.
It's the only thing that hasn't gone up. It's the only thing that hasn't gone up.
Okay. Now this is for. Nope, this is for asphalt materials. And this is from Dunick. And they're here in town, and also Brinsburg. Okay. Hot mix is eighty-six dollars even. Cold mix is two forty even.
Uh, last year Dunick had a key gravel, they didn't this year. In that same envelope, I wonder.
Looking to see if there's any more paper.
Okay.
Doesn't really look like it.
Just checking.
No, I do not see.
Okay.
So that's all that was in there. And uh corrugated pipe, we are going to buy off uh. Uh Beetle County's bid. They uh.
Okay.
They.
Need separate action next week.
Okay.
You can't include that.
Okay.
Because it, it's already an accepted bid, so we'll have to put it on the agenda to purchase from that bid.
Yeah, they. Um, get the bids. And uh. The, the price is the same throughout the state through uh, uh, through North Steel. So they bid one county and then the rest of them. Usually buy off them anymore, so.
That's, yeah, it's not on this notice of bidders anyway, so I just saw it in the bid tabs, but yeah. Okay.
All right.
So, do you wanna um, as far as um, well, we have to still do the chemicals, I guess.
I have a couple more on the agenda. The chemicals about Steves.
Okay, yeah, okay, where do you wanna go, let's see, so do you wanna maybe come back to this later and you wanna look at that?
Oh, I'll finalize that next week.
Okay, all right, okay.
So.
So we're just opening, okay, and then uh, why don't we go and take care of, we got item eleven and twelve and thirteen, correct? Okay, so, so item eleven.
Item eleven is something we do in conjunction with the bids, um, the last time we took action, it was authorized sale of used culverts. Bridge lumber, bridge supplies, tires, et cetera, at fifty percent of inventory cost or fifty percent of replacement cost. Cost whichever is higher, and then scrap metal to be sold at the current daily scrap prices, is that? The way you wanna proceed?
Yep.
Okay.
That's my.
Used highway.
Yes, so.
Supplies.
Yeah, so basically what the agenda item says is action to declare used highway supply surplus to be sold at designated rates. So motion by Johnson, second by Waterman, are there any other uh questions or discussion on that?
We, once in a while, we get a culvert in, if we have to replace one. A lot of times they're shot when we take them out. Once in a while, we'll have one that can be used and we'll sell it, and then we have used uh. Bridge lumber, once in a great while, we have old uh signposts. That uh, when they did the sign survey or study and redid it all, we have wood posts and steel posts. So if you wanted to buy some of those, you could buy those.
And they're all included in that description.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to know what the price of a, of a signpost was, for example, how would they find out?
They'd have to call the office.
Okay, but they're the rates were. So when we say designated rates, it's less, okay.
And I will list um, this exact wording, fifty percent of the. Original cost or fifty percent of replacement cost.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how we'll word it.
All right, any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, yeah, the last couple years, we've had like one or two culverts that we took out. And replaced because they were damage on the end and then they're cut the end off and so. Yep.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Let's say no, okay, that motion carries, and number eleven is, I'm sorry, number uh, twelve is action to approve a bridge inspection resolution.
And we do this every year. Banner and Associates takes care of our bridge inspections, and this is to get those guys through the state to get going. When the weather is decent and it's starting.
Make motion to approve.
So a motion by Van Dusen, is there a second?
There.
Second by Waterman, any other discussion? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, that motion carries. Uh, so that's number twelve, so thirteen is to approve uh a cell phone statement for a new highway employee.
Yep, um.
What's the employee's name?
Eric Cozad.
Okay.
Or Cozad, excuse me.
And uh, the amount for highway employees is twenty-five dollars per month, and I'll need to know an effective date.
He started on the first of February.
Is that the date you want it to be, okay?
So. Motion to approve by Van Dusen, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Schwer, any other questions or discussion? So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Will say no, okay, that motion carries.
I'll have another one when I hire another person, which hopefully will be shortly, so.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so. Mr. Chemical, so going back to, to number ten, this.
Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify on the bids that we just opened, those will be finalized next week, after you have had a chance to review all the. Make sure.
Yeah, we'll award them next week, so, yeah, I was, I was thinking we were gonna do that too, so.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning.
I brought a pocket knife. Go through security.
Glad to see us working.
All right, looks like I got two bidders for the weed chemicals. First one is hefty seed out of Watertown. It will start out right away with glyphosate. Yep, this one just the plain one right now. Price nineteen eighty-five a gallon. Second would be Roundup Pro, equivalent or aquatic. Oh, excuse me, I, I did, did that wrong. Um, the aquatic one was the first one, sorry, read it wrong.
Thirteen eighty-five.
Yeah. Nineteen eighty-five for the aquatic. Roundup Pro, regular glyphosate, forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Forty-eight fifty-one, did you say?
Yes, that's correct.
Centic gallon?
Yes, per gallon, these are all per gallon basis.
Um, what was the, the first one?
First one is rodeo or aquatic glyph, glyphosate.
At what price?
At eighteen eighty-five.
That's it.
Nineteen eighty.
Or nineteen eighty-five.
Was that? Forty-eight thirty-five last year? Is what I've got for Cartiva? Is that?
It could have been, hopefully he didn't make the wrong mistake of the wrong order, we'll find out what.
Yeah, I mean, it was thirty-eight last year, it's forty-eight this year, but.
That's why it don't seem right.
Okay, yeah, uh, it's a.
Yeah.
Thirty-dollar.
Doesn't really, that's why it does not seem right in this, in this order, so.
Yes, excuse me, um, what was the name of the glyphosate?
Um, it's an aquatic, but he does not give manufacturer name on this one.
Oh, for the straight glycafeate?
Uh, straight glycafeate, yeah, he did not put the manufacturer's name on. It's most likely a generic Roundup.
Okay.
So can we use the aquatic glycafeate instead of the other?
Um, aquatic glyphosate, aquatic glyphosate can only be used over water. Um, it's labeled for only water, the regular glyphosate or Roundup cannot be applied over water, it's a labeling deal. And technically, it's just a label. Um, if they would actually do testing, they would not know that it's right.
The concentrate. Yeah, the, the concentrate is probably the same, it's just.
Yes, right, it just, yeah, it's a labeling issue. So what federal government FF, FCA or F? Yeah, the federal um, level.
More or less once.
Okay, we'll go to Plateau or Equivalent. One thirty-six ninety-four. Per gallon. Two forty amine aquatic label, which most two forties are, but there are some exceptions out there because of labeling. Um, nineteen eighty-three.
Per gallon.
Yeah, per gallon, and this is required in a two hundred and fifty gallon tote.
And last year, there was no bid due to lack of availability.
Yeah.
Sound right?
Yes, um, because last year, the only one that, that did it last year was.
Thirty-eight or eighty-three.
Eighty, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think I made my eye check, which I do.
Okay, so there is availability.
Yes. Two forty ester. This is in two and a half gallons, um, and this would be the six pound asset. Thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Thirty-seven seventy-two. Six pound, it's best. Esther is a. Oh, okay, yeah, that's Esther.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's a petroleum salt base. Tordon twenty-two K, sixty-three twenty-eight. Raise on next, fifty-two thirty. Non-ionic ninety-ten surfactant. Twelve dollars and seventy-three cents. Part of my right hand doesn't read very well.
Okay, sorry.
Gotta have a little humor in it. All right, this is from Van Deest Chemical Supply.
Yeah.
What's the name of that?
Van Deest.
Van Deest.
Yeah, Van Deest, they're based out of uh Iowa, but they have warehouses in South Dakota and Minnesota within driving distance. Um.
Out up here.
Um, this, actually, we've been getting our supply now from Granite Falls.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, we'll start out with rodeo or equivalence, of course, he has in here, rodeo is no longer available. So they have Intimidator Aquatic. And that is priced at thirty-eight dollars and forty-five cents a gallon.
Well, that's intimidating.
Yeah, I think. We'll, we'll, we'll go on to, yeah. Okay, Roundup Pro Max. It's a fair product. Fifty dollars per gallon. That's a glyphosate, yep, that's right, yep, fifty dollars. Okay, Plateau. BSF, it is one hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents. One twenty, twenty-five. Two forty amine. This is a Van Deest product, twenty-one fifty a gallon. Two forty ester, six pound. Thirty-seven sixty-five.
Can you repeat that?
Would be seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thirty-seven sixty-five.
Yep. Tordon twenty-two K Cortiva, fifty-one dollars and seventy cents. Raise on next. Fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Non-ionic surfactant. Twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. But they also have Premier. Um, ninety NS for twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Premier ninety?
Yep. Some of these, the reason for some of these products is because the dilution rate that they have, so. Um, because of. Of the aquatic glyphosate, I think there's a big question mark on that one, so. I'll have to come back to you then and.
It's just opening.
Yep.
It's on, on the agenda for today.
Yep.
Well, and yeah, well, possible, actually, I guess.
But I think I wanna.
That's fine.
And you do have the ability to accept. Both.
Both, yes.
Based on availability and cost savings to the colony.
Yep.
So that's just those two bits, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Steve has item number fourteen.
Oh, yeah, that's fourteen, all right, so number fourteen is action to approve the purchase of a more. For Memorial Park as budgeted.
This is a budgeted item, and I figured I better go and reach out right away just because of, of supply and stuff and see if they have it. Um, I did reach out to Watertown Lawn and Garden, which has been our supplier for quite a few years. Um, I um approached them, uh, this item here is estimated at fourteen thousand. Seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-six cents, they do have this unit in stock in their warehouse. Um, so I figured I'll get this across to you guys, I mean, as soon as I.
An eighteen percent discount.
Yes.
Um, is there any trade-in?
Um, I did ask about trade-in, and he says, he, he did give a little bit on our last one, but he says. With the amount of hours that we put on these machines, um, we put four hundred hours on these machines a year.
Would have a trade-in, we'll have to take.
Yeah, but I, he more or less recommended probably just to surplus it and probably sell it. And so we had, or just utilize it as a backup for now.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman, so, so this for the purchase of this uh Gravely More. So you said that the, the price was an estimate?
Uh, he put estimate, this is actually a legit price, I don't know why, I think he put it in the, in his, in his.
Okay.
In his deal, and so we had.
Okay.
So. Just, just a quick question, Steve, where is the bid assist nonprofit organization, or is that something that Gravely does?
Um, I think it's what Gravely ends up having promotional deals for like nonprofits and government deals. Cause he has to reach out, basically, is this the still going package ship, and so.
Gravely kicks that in.
Kicks that in, yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, okay, that motion carries.
All right.
Next, Steve. Item number ten is action to approve contract with the state of South Dakota for community health nurse services.
This is our annual contract with the state for our community health nurses. Nursing services, that would be Cody and her associates, and the amount is fifteen thousand. Three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty, fifty-four cents, and I was gonna see if I could figure out what we. Paid last year.
I, I looked it over and uh, I did not read all the fine print, but it's basically the same contract.
Yes.
Just the price may have changed, and that's what I'm checking on here.
There's a lot of.
Uh, last year it was fourteen thousand five hundred and nine, so it's up slightly.
So less than, yeah, less. So less than, yeah, less, so motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen, so the, the increase is less than a thousand dollars, so.
Yeah.
So, any other questions or discussion? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no, okay, that motion carries. Um, I think for number sixteen, which is dealing with cybersecurity, we're gonna hold off a week or so on that one. Um, just been talking to Andrew. Uh, and so number seventeen is action to approve claims for payment.
And you all should have a list of the claims on your desk. Uh, claims are one million, two hundred and fifty seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and seventy four cents of that amount, six hundred and forty three thousand. Two hundred and forty nine dollars and eighty four cents goes directly to the state of South Dakota for motor vehicle collections and other collections that. Uh, that we get during the month for the state, and then the county claims are six hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty five dollars and ninety cents.
Questions or discussions on, well, as your motion. So moved, so motion by Van Dusen, is there a second? I'll second it, so wish we were any, any questions or discussion?
If they're outstanding, so be there.
Court-appointed attorneys.
Yeah, that's.
At fifty three thousand.
Yeah, so that's, that's one item that we know is gonna go up because we don't, I just.
Attorney's on age three, fifty three thousand, we hope that's not an amount we're gonna see every month.
Now, just for everybody's information, though, that, that's a, a change, so we had to. Um, you know, uh, over the course of last year, we discussed how we're gonna deal with the, uh, the public defender contract. So that's basically, so court-appointed attorneys are basically defense attorneys that are appointed case by case, um, by the court. And so there's paid, they're paid at a, at a much lower, uh, rate than attorneys would normally be paid at, but that, that rate is determined by the state, and it's still. Higher than what we were used to paying, but it, but it does get the case load moving faster, so hopefully we'll see savings in other places.
Sixth in the detention center budget, you will see a bill to Perry Lakes Hospital. Uh, for six thousand and ten dollars, that is for one of our inmates, and that is at a reduced rate, then we do get a reduced rate for that, but it is. We don't normally see bills that high, this must have been an inmate that had to be hospitalized.
Yeah. Yeah, that's unusual, normally, you know, with, with quick care, we, we've been, we've been saving, we've been saving quite a bit, or with basically in, in, in-house, in the contracted.
Yeah, I'm not sure, are we up and running with the new?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, first quarter payments to the mental health center on page eight, and that is for. The Human Service Agency, the developmentally disabled portion, and the Serenity Hills portion, which they submitted to you as a budget request.
Right.
And it was approved last year. Zoological Society and the Humane Society, um, asked for the drawdown of their allocated funds in twenty twenty three, twenty five thousand for the.
Right.
The zoo and nineteen thousand for the Humane Society. We also paid for our contract with the state of South Dakota, SDSU Extension Service for our four H advisor, that's twenty one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and sixty three cents, that's on. The bottom of page nine.
Okay.
We paid for our water monitoring stations to the US Geological Survey on page ten, that's an annual amount, nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty three, we share that amount with. The city of Watertown in Cottington County for blood monitoring stations north of town.
I'm sure which page was done again.
Uh, page ten.
Okay.
And then, you know, our big, or big payment to the state of South Dakota is for the motor V fees that were collected in the month of.
Hundred and thirty nine.
January, and that's six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Now, we already have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You already did.
Good, good job, it'd be pretty good. So, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no. Okay, that motion carries. Okay, action to approve automatic budget supplements and welfare budget ERA planners.
Uh, we have spent in the first two months of the year, ninety seven thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars and forty three cents to assist people. Um, through the welfare office for rent, utilities, um, maybe house payments too, I'm not exactly. Sure on that, what, what all you can use that for. And so we have remitted that amount, and we have grant, have received grant funds to cover that, so we do an automatically. Automatic supplement to the welfare budget to restore these amounts to their budget.
Sure, a motion, a second.
I'll move that, we did do that.
So motion by Schwer, second by Johnson, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no. Okay, that motion carries. Number nineteen, action to approve personnel changes.
I have nothing for nineteen or twenty.
So. Okay, public notices, number twenty one, um, possible, where possible, quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at. Um, I have one that we have the CCJAC meeting this Thursday evening, um, at five o'clock PM. In the courthouse, in the, in the big new courtroom downstairs, so that one, that meeting's open to the public. Um. There might possible quorum of commissioner, Commissioner Van Dusen, I actually on that committee. Anything else? Okay. Um, number twenty two, any old business? For old business?
Yep.
Yeah, hold on, let's, let's leave you on the, let's leave you on the open there, you're saying, any, any new business? Yeah. Okay, and, okay, open, this will, we'll throw you in with the public there. Steve.
Everybody's questioning, well, last month, I read the minutes and I kinda made a mistake. Um, I looked at my re- report, and I had said May eighth for the weed meeting, um, that was incorrect. Um, it was supposed to be March eighth, but now that has been changed to March sixth. Due to, um, uh. Um, state, uh, towns and township want to come in and speak on the Rafe. Okay, project and so that prior to the annual, um, towns and township meeting, which will follow the following night, so.
Monday night.
March, March night, yep, March sixth, Monday night.
March sixth, Monday night.
Yep. The annual, the, with the, yeah, weed, yeah, so we get the soup.
Yeah, trackers, so.
Yep.
So. Alright.
Is it, is it still at the extension?
Still at the extension center, yes.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the weed supper, March sixth.
Six o'clock.
Six, okay, that's an important one, yeah. So that's also, that's also where that.
No, don't have to pre-register, just show up, yeah.
Likely quorum of commissioners, so.
Yes.
Um, alright, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? I guess we haven't heard anything, obviously called in, um, any commissioner comments? Okay, so, uh, we do have a need for, so that's, uh, twenty three, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, um. Twenty five, action entered into executive session, we do have reason for exec, you don't have any pers, there is, okay, so there's one. Uh, for number one personnel issues, and there's another, um, or, uh. Uh, safety, security, uh, that's number four, so we have two reasons to go in. Um, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So make motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no. And there will, I don't think there's gonna be any action afterwards, so there won't be any action.